Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County's Virtual Candidate Forum for the Wake County Board of Education. My name is Cheryl Tong. The League of Women Voters of Wake County is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering voters and defending democracy. We encourage informed and active participation in government, help citizens increase their understanding of major public policy issues, and work to influence public policy through education and advocacy. As a nonpartisan organization, we do not endorse or oppose candidates, and we are proud to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. All candidates who filed to run for the Wake County Board of Education were invited to participate in our candidate forums today. Outreach included emails, phone calls, as well as certified letters inviting candidates to respond and provide citizens an opportunity to learn about their views. I would like to thank you to the candidates who are with us today. The Wake County Board of Education is a local governing body of the Wake Public School System. It is the largest school district in North Carolina and is the 14th largest in the United States. It serves a very diverse student body and has improved its graduation rate so that almost 91% graduate from high school. Its nine members are currently elected from nine separate county districts. Each member represents that district within the entire board and is elected by residents of that district. The race is nonpartisan, meaning that candidates are not running as representatives of a political party and their party affiliation is not listed on the ballot. The school board sets policy for the school system implemented by the superintendent and the administrative staff. The board also adopts the annual budget proposal that includes its request for local funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners, as well as its plan for using their allocated state and federal funds. The school board does not have taxing authority. Today, we welcome candidates for District Five, Lynn Edmund and Jackie Vogel. District Five is southwest Raleigh and South Cary towards Holly Springs. All candidates live in District Five. I'd like to welcome Lynn and Jackie today. Thank you for joining us today. We ask every candidate for Wake County Board of Education the same questions. The questions will cover a broad range of issues relevant to the scope of the board. Before I begin, I would like to verify with each of you that you have not received the questions in advance. Can you both confirm that?
Yes, this is Lynn.
And Jackie?
I can confirm that. I'm shaking my head. I'm finding my mute button.
Thank you. You will now have two minutes for an opening statement. Please include in your remarks why you chose to run for the school board and what makes you a good candidate for this position. And we will start with Lynn Edmund if you want to go ahead.
Sure. My name is Lynn Edmonds, and I am the mother of two adult children that were educated K-12 within Wake County Public Schools. I myself was born and raised in Durham and attended Durham Public Schools, graduated from Durham Public Schools. My husband and I have lived in District Five since 1995, so for well over 20 years. I have been a volunteer in Wake County Public Schools and with Wake County Public Schools for more than 20 years when you include my service and leadership on PTA, several PTAs and booster clubs. I was a member of the District Four Board Advisory Council when Rosa Gill served on the Wake County Board of Education, and I'm currently a member of the District Five Board Advisory Council. And these are citizen advisory councils made up of PTA members and community members and school leadership. And I'm on the District Five Board Advisory Council even though our children have graduated out of the system. In 2016, I joined the Wake County Library Commission as an at-large member, and I did so because of the connection between early literacy skills and student achievement. I am outreach director for Public Schools First NC, and that helps me have a broad understanding of the relationship between state policy and state funding and the local school boards, including WCPSS. My campaign is focused on four areas: staffing shortages, school safety, curriculum integrity and the freedom to read, and equity. And finally, I'd like to share a few of my endorsements. I've been endorsed by the Wake NCAE, Equality NC, the Network for Public Education, Everytown for Gun Safety, and the current District Five Board Rep, Dr. Jim Martin. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And Jackie, you can go ahead, please. You are muted.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us for this forum today and giving us an opportunity to share who we are and how we feel about certain issues. My name is Jackie Beagle. My husband and I have been married for nine years. I have lived in District Five since 1988, so quite some time. My son graduated from Athens Drive High School. My granddaughter just graduated, and my grandson is in Adams Elementary in the special ed program. As I, as we went through the lockdown during the pandemic, I had a hands-on opportunity to do school with my grandson. And it really gave me a lot of insight into the educational system with Wake County. He has amazing teachers and amazing administration, but as a kindergartner, he couldn't even log on to the computer by himself. So I've been an educator for 40 years, instrumental educator for 40 years. I've had the opportunity to start band programs throughout Wake County and have really enjoyed doing that. I do believe that music and the arts are essential to academic success, mental well-being, and emotional stability. I've really enjoyed throughout my years of teaching and continuing to do so, the lightbulb moments these kids have when things glitch or when they come together for them. My grandson inspires me to be part of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie Beagle. We now move to the question part of the forum, and you will have two minutes each to answer each question. And I will start now with the first question. The teacher pipeline issue is in the news frequently. Fewer college students are choosing education as their major, and teachers are leaving the position for better pay. Wake County is currently facing a staffing shortage and reported in late August that they still need 400 more teachers. What strategies do you think would help Wake County Public School System recruit and retain teachers? And we will start first with Jackie Beagle. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. So definitely, the fellows program that we used to highly support in Wake County provided so many teachers that teachers used to come to the opportunity to interview and hoped they would get a job. They would have so much competition. They were not guaranteed a job. There were changes in the financing of that program, and so less graduating seniors have chosen to do that. I think that the fellows program is an excellent means of bringing high school students into the teaching profession. I think that it's highly important that we look at what we are paying our teachers. There's just, with the economy, we have not kept up with how much it costs to live in Wake County. And so we need to be able to connect with the legislature and definitely work on getting a better salary situation for our teachers. Another thing is I've talked with teachers throughout the county over the past two months is they don't always have the support from the administration. And I think that's very, very important. You have to be able to know that your administrator supports you 100%. I also think discipline's possibly an issue. You know, a friend of mine is substituting in the public schools, and she's dealing with kindergarten class where she has a student who kicks and uses poor language. And there's got to be a means of helping these students learn to respect and treat others with dignity.
Thank you, Jackie. And Lynn Edmund, go ahead.
Thank you. So we can only, as the Wake County School Board, we can only control really two things as it impacts teachers and teacher recruitment, and that is our budget priorities and policy. So with the budget, and as you said, Cheryl, in your opening remarks, we don't have taxing authority, so we rely heavily on state funds and our county commissioners to fund local supplements for teachers. And our commissioners, again and again, especially in recent years, are filling a gap that the legislature has left us faced with. I think we're like 38th in teacher pay in the country in North Carolina. So we need that help, and we're fortunate in Wake County that we can provide that supplement. But it's unfair, in my opinion, that more and more burden is being placed on county governments to make teaching an attractive profession in North Carolina. The other thing that we can control is policy, and I think we need to make Wake County Public Schools a place where teachers want to teach and want to go into teaching. And we do have a Grow Your Own program within Wake County that is separate from the state Teaching Fellows Program. I am still learning about the Grow Your Own program, but it's something I would definitely support and want to be more robust so that we can keep Wake County students that might be interested in teaching going through that program and then teach in our schools. We also need to be advocates at the state level, not just with teacher pay, but making sure that they, that our students have the resources that they need. We're very low in the low four and like, I don't know, 40 something in per people spending, and that's been very stagnant. We're near the bottom. And so our teachers are frustrated when their students don't have what they need. So it's about respect, and it's about making sure our students get what they need. It's not just teacher pay.
Thank you very much, Lynn Edmund. And now we'll move on to the second question. Capital expenses are paid for with local property taxes. Building new schools must be carefully considered due to the high cost of construction materials and land. Throughout Wake County, we have some schools that are under-enrolled and others that are overcrowded. What are your suggestions for how to best balance the school population and fully utilize our existing infrastructure? And so we'll go back to Lynn first and then followed by Jackie.
So when we ask taxpayers to pass these bonds for new schools, whether that's a bond that was passed 20 years ago or whether it's the one that's on the ballot this November, we need to be responsible with that money and make sure that we fill the schools that the taxpayers build for us. So assignment is really, really tough, and it is difficult to have overcrowded schools concentrated in specific areas of this very large county and under-enrolled schools in other parts of the county. Strategies, I mean, we have to work together with parents. We have to get the support of the community reassignment, I should say, is, we can't avoid that. Wake County is growing by 62 people a day, and some of those people are public K-12 public school students. So we have to be fiscally responsible with our school buildings and our spaces, and we have to work together, again, with the community on, you know, filling these schools. We can offer some programming at our under-enrolled schools. We've done that in the past by making some of our under-enrolled schools magnets. And I expect that we'll be doing that in the future. I don't have any specifics about what schools might be magnetized, but that's one tool that we can use. We also have special programs even in non-magnet schools. There's a school in District Five that is not a magnet school. It's escaping me this minute, but it's in the Apex area, and it has a digital learning academy within the school, again, even though it's not a magnet. So we have programs like that that we can offer to attract students to perhaps an under-enrolled school. And I look forward to working on those challenges. It's not an easy problem to solve.
Thank you, Lynn Edmund. And now we'll hear from Jackie Beagle. Go ahead, Jackie. You're unmute. You're unmute.
Again, working within the realm of overcrowded schools and under-enrolled schools, it's so difficult from the point at which you have high growth in a certain area, and so you put new schools there, you build them, and then, you know, movement happens across the county for various reasons, and then you end up with these under-enrolled schools. I think it's very, very difficult for parents to constantly or regularly be reassigned. And it's happened sometimes just even within neighborhoods where a neighborhood can be split right down the middle as far as reassignment goes. And I think we need to be much more sensitive about what we're doing as far as reassignment goes. Parents should not be reassigned every year. So as new students come into the area, those are the points at which we need to look at where those students need to go. I think that sometimes neighborhood schools are important for families because you have many families who may not have the ability to, you know, travel 30 minutes to get to their child's programs or their child's PTA meetings. And so to get your parents much more involved sometime, it might be necessary to engage in, allow them to engage in their neighborhood schools sometimes. But most definitely, the magnet schools have enabled us to move students across the county as students and families desire to be in the programs that are available in the magnet schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Now, we're going to go to our third question. School board members are elected in a district, but they govern an entire school system. In your view, what makes an effective school board member, and what do you think are their key responsibilities? And we will let, allow Jackie this time to go first.
So as stated, school board members set policy. And as I have pulled up Wake County Strategic Plan and been studying through it, it's quite long. There's a lot of policy that exists. It's very, very difficult to pinpoint real, specific things within that realm of the school board system. As school board members, we need to be looking, looking at providing the best educational experience for each student in our district within the whole county. We have to work together. It's not just our district. You know, we get voted for, or we get voted from within our district. We live within our district. We support the schools within our district. We seek out the needs for our families within our district. But when it comes all together, we have to work together as a team, as a board, because we are working for the entire county. So I think that's all I have to say about that.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. And next, Lynn, if you would like to answer?
Yeah, Cheryl, did I get this right? You asked what makes an effective school board member and the key responsibilities? Is that the gist of the question?
That is correct.
Thanks. So what makes an effective school board member? I think first and foremost, you have to actually be an advocate for public education and an advocate for teachers and an advocate for public school students and an advocate for children. So that's first and foremost. I think that makes you effective. You have to be willing to talk to community members and community leaders, not just the county commissioners. But we need everyone in the community to understand the critical role of our public education system, and that makes you an effective school board member, is to be able to have those conversations out in the community with community members, parents, business leaders, and local elected officials, and certainly state-level elected officials. Our key responsibilities, again, as Jackie said, and as I said earlier, is setting policy. And then, we only currently, we only have one employee, and that's the superintendent of schools. So we have to hire that person and set their salary. That's one of our key responsibilities. We also need to be present and visible. I view as one of our responsibilities, I talked about being in the community, but we also need to be in our schools, not in an invasive way because we, you know, don't want to be disruptive at the school day, but we need to be, you know, at our sporting events in our schools and at community meetings and at, you know, special occasions, performances, things of that nature. We need to be visible in our district, visible in the county, and show our advocacy and support of our public school system. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. And now we will get to our fourth question. North Carolina ranks 39th in the nation for per people expenditures and 38th in teacher pay. In Wake County, we depend a lot on local funds to supplement the state's budget. Do you think our current school budget is adequate for the needs of our school district, and please explain why or why not? And this time, we will have Lynn go first, followed by Jackie.
Am I unmuted? I have a, it's saying to unmute. Do you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I do not think it's adequate. The state, and thank you for those numbers, Cheryl. I didn't have mine right earlier. I got the 38th, I believe, but not the per pupil, but we need to do better. I do know that North Carolina is 49th or 50th in funding effort, and that is the amount of money that any state of their GDP, of their, of their budget that they invest in public education. And we are very near the bottom as a state, so we need to do better. That's where the Leandro funding is being advocated for. I, myself, I'm an advocate for fully funding the Leandro Plan, the comprehensive plan, and we have a state budget surplus, so there's no reason that we shouldn't do it. Wake County will benefit from that funding, not just in teacher pay, but we would get something like 900 helping professionals in Wake County Public Schools. That's going to be our counselors, school psychologists, social workers, et cetera. We would also get textbook funding and increase in that, and that's within Wake County if the Leandro Plan was funded. As I said earlier, it really disturbs me how much, how much the burden is being pushed down at the county level because the state is not adequately funding our schools. We are so fortunate in Wake County that the commissioners and the voters have shown up time and again and supported Wake County Public Schools. But that's not how we're, that's not how our system is set up as far as the system we should have. The state needs to be doing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And Jackie?
Okay, so could you just refresh me on the question, please?
Sure, sure. I can reread the question. It says, "North Carolina ranks 39th in the nation for per people expenditures and 38th in teacher pay. In Wake County, we depend on local funds to supplement the state's budget. Do you think the current school budget is adequate for the needs of our school district, and please explain why or why not?"
Okay. So I think our school budget runs pretty close to about $2 billion, if I'm not mistaken. I tend to feel that the money is not always used wisely. I think that there is, we're doing, even though we're 39th PPE, the thing you have to remember is sometimes the economy and where we're located within that realm of the 39th and where we are. But there's close to $10,000 per pupil expenditures here in Wake County. Can we always use more money? Absolutely. But is throwing more money into the pot the answer? When you think about Leandro, as Lynn mentioned, and I consider the fact that we would have 900 helping professionals, where does that help us with the education of our students at this point? We are at a level that is about, when you look at math performance, we have a lack of proficiency. 50% of our students are not proficient. So we need to focus in on education for our students and making sure that they can learn, read, and write, and do math.
Thank you, Jackie. And now we're going to go to our fifth and final question. School safety and security is a complex topic with various organizations and interest groups tackling the issues from different angles, but clearly, everyone is concerned about school safety. And what, we want to know what is being done well by Wake County Public School System, and what would you suggest is needed to improve school safety? And Jackie, you can go first on this question.
Thank you. So right before the lockdown, we actually had an independent company brought in to evaluate our safety situation throughout the schools. And they came up with several suggestions that we could potentially be putting into place. Definitely, our SROs are an important part of our safety system here in Wake County, and there is a very extensive program that these SROs must go through to be able to be an officer in the school. Sometimes in SRO, just their presence will help to calm things down. Sometimes they have to step into fights. I mean, there are, there are fights at some of these schools on a weekly basis. And we, you know, you have principals that are having to get involved and break up fights. So it's good to have that support. I think that within the school buildings, there are definite things that could be improved. And some of the older schools are probably the ones that are most at risk as far as having the most safety. And I think too, that, you know, making sure that there are locked entrances, making sure that the ability to get in, even substitutes, they need to have, you know, a key to get in. They should not have to struggle with, you know, what they're doing as far as getting into the schools and being safe. There needs to be a definite plan that substitutes are aware of when they come in and substitute. So I think that we're doing all the good things, and I think there's definitely things that we can improve upon, and that we can always do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And Lynn?
Yeah, this is something that I get asked a lot about by voters. It's in my conversations with voters and with educators. I think what's being done well, I went to two community meetings after Uvalde that involved the senior staff of the Security Department of the Wake County Public School Security Department. And it was reported, they are constantly evaluating, in addition to the audit that was done in 2019, they are constantly evaluating their existing protocols and best practices. They're constantly getting vendors approach the school system with products, you know, and all of these things to prevent intruders or to somehow protect students and staff if an intruder does get in the building. So they, they look at all of those So they, they look at all of those things and, um, you know, look at, again, best practices across the country. So I think that's what's being done well. Uh, what I think, um, another thing that we do well is we actually require more training for our SROs than is required by the state. Um, Wake County Public Schools is already doing that. I think what, where we can improve is we can strengthen our, um, restorative justice practices. I would like to see if it's not being done already, every SRO be required, um, to have restorative justice, justice training. I also think that school safety has to be about a lot more than, um, dealing with intruders, you know, or threats to the school, um, with school shootings, et cetera. School safety to me has to also mean that every staff person and every student, um, feel safe in our schools. And so we need to work on ants, more anti-bullying measures. That's already happening, but we need to continue that work and focus on prevention, violence prevention is very important.
Thank you Lynn. Uh, I'd like to thank both candidates, uh, Jackie Beagle and Lynn Edmonds for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running for, uh, running and serving in elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve these important duties as a member of the Wake County Board of Education. So now we're going to do, uh, closing statements and you each have two minutes. And, um, we will start with Jackie. Go ahead.
Thank you. As I have had the opportunity throughout the past few months, um, knocking on doors, meeting voters, meeting parents, meeting grandparents, um, meeting children. I have heard from some that they're totally satisfied with the education and the schools that their children or grandchildren are part of. And then I've heard from others who are very frustrated as to what is happening within the public schools, that they are not getting the education that they need, that their, their, their we as a board of education need to address these issues. We need to be sure that we are providing a quality education for every student in Wake County, because these students are our future. They're our future leaders. We may be graduating at a 91% rate, but they have a 50% proficiency rate in Math III and 50% proficiency in Math I. And our fifth graders are struggling with reading comprehension. Needs change. Um, we need to have strong teacher support. Teachers need to be heard. Teachers need to be seen. We need quality curriculum. We need to have parental involvement. And we need to have fiscal responsibility. This is, these are some of the most important things that I think are facing, um, this county and across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Very quickly, I want to respond to a couple of things that Jackie mentioned with regard to fiscal responsibility, um, and, you know, perhaps the county could use their resources better. There is an external audit that is done of the school system, um, of the budget and our expenditures every year. And, um, it's public record and we pass with flying colors every year and have for many years. Also, the well-being of children with regard to helping professionals in our schools. In my mind, taking care of the whole child always, always supports academics and it supports teachers too. When teachers can focus on teaching and academics and not be the social worker and not be the school psychologist and not be that helping professional. In addition, you know, when they have the supports in the building, it supports student success. Um, I am excited to do this work. I want to thank the League for having us and letting us get our message out to voters. I've been attending school board meetings and work sessions and committee meetings for 12 years now and I still want to do this work. I want to serve, um, and I want to be a voice on the Wake County School Board. Uh, we offer a huge amount of choice within Wake County, within our public school system, between magnets and we have CTE in every high school. We have, um, several early college high schools that partner with Wake Tech. And I think that is such an asset and something to be excited about. Uh, businesses continue to come here, as I said before, and, um, because of our strong public school system. And I just, I want to be a part of that work. I want to focus on student well-being and academics. I am happy to work with parents. I view parents and community members as our partners. And so I ask for the people of District Five to vote for me, Lynn Edmonds, as your next school board member. Thank you.
Thank you Lynn and thank you again Jackie. As we end our forum, we would like to encourage you to visit our website, vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and find out the latest information on polling place hours and locations. Thank you again for joining us.